Good evening. It's six o'clock on January 7th. Welcome to the Findlay City Council Meeting of January 7th, regular session. We will start this evening's meeting with the roll call.
Mr. Ballman.
Here.
Mr. DeArment.
Here.
Ms. Frishy.
Here.
Mr. Greeno.
Present.
Mr. Hellman.
Here.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Here.
Mr. Palmer.
Here.
Mr. Russell.
Here.
Ms. Warnicki.
Here.
And Mr. Wobser.
Mr. Wobser contacted me earlier and said he would not be at tonight's meeting. Mr. Russell, move to excuse. Second, Mr. Greeno, any discussion? All those in favor of excusing Jeff Wobser, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. He is excused. We please stand for the pledge allegiance and we will follow that with a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to accept the previous city council minutes. Mr. Palmer, second, Mr. Niemeyer, discussion, hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. They are accepted. Mr. Russell, do we have any add-ons, replacements, or removals from tonight's agenda?
One add-on letter from Director of Law, Director of Law Rasmussen, and would move that that will be moved to the, or added to the reports of municipal officers and municipal departments section, and replacements for ordinance 2024-146, that's the mobile food unit, and ordinance 2025-004 for the Airport Advisory Board, Chapter 149 legislation. And so moving that the letter be added and the two ordinances be replaced.
Second, Mr. Palmer, discussion, hearing none. All those in favor of the changes as described, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. They are done. We have no proclamations, retirement resolutions, we have no petitions, we have no oral communications. We do have one written communication.
A letter from Pauline Seismore regarding marijuana dispensaries.
Discussion, letter be filed. We have no utility contractor communications written or oral. We will then add, move on to reports of officers and departments.
Officer shareholders disclosure form from the Ohio Department of Commerce, Division of Liquor Control for South Main Food Mart LLC located at 3050 South Main Street in Findlay for a D1 and D2 liquor permit. A check of the records show no criminal record for those who applied.
Mr. Palmer?
Move that no objection be filed.
Second, Mr. Ballman, discussion, hearing none. All those in favor that no objection be filed, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. We will not file an objection.
Findlay Fire Department Activities Report for December 2024.
Report to be filed.
Findlay Police Department Activities Report for December 2024.
Report to be filed.
Findlay Income Tax Monthly Collections Report for December 2024.
Report to be filed.
Letter from City Engineer Calb regarding 2025 early projects for bidding.
Letter be filed.
Add-on letter from Director, Director of Law Rasmussen regarding retirement.
Letter be filed. Oh, sorry, Mr. Russell. I'd like to give Don an opportunity to speak to his letter if he so chooses.
Well, it's been forty years and two months, and I've worked with a lot of great people, and I think I'm leaving at a great time, and everything's moving ahead. Fantastic work from the departments and all the people and personnel, and I think it's just time for me to go, and Holly probably will expect that.
I'm gonna miss you. I want, I want your legal opinion when it agrees with me.
Yeah, that's exactly why I'm going. So, I appreciate all the good wishes and everything, and thank the people to keep them going and keeping this city safe and prosperous.
Mr. Russell?
Good luck to you.
Yeah, Don, I just wish you the best in retirement. Congratulations on, on the decision, and you will be very much missed sitting across there seeing a nice, pretty face. Now we'll just have some for the near-term confusion on my two robs, so, but I wish you Godspeed in retirement.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Just watch your email. We will be putting together an open house to see Don off, so you will certainly all be invited.
Finally, Don, your good friend, we're gonna miss you, so, but you're always invited to go have a cocktail with me at any time. Bring your pretty wife with you. All right, let me clear my eyes a little bit here. Committee reports, we have none. Move into legislation.
First reading for Resolution 1, 2025, a resolution authorizing the sale of personal property which is not needed for public use or is obsolete or unfit, for the use of which it was acquired by internet auction and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Russell?
Move for adoption of Resolution 001-2025.
Second, Mr. Greeno, discussion, hearing none. All those in favor of the resolution, say aye if your name is called. Those opposed, nay.
Mr. Ballman.
Aye.
Mr. DeArment.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
And Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Resolution is adopted.
First reading for Resolution 2, 2025, a resolution requesting the county auditor to make tax advances during the year 2025 pursuant to a higher revised code 321.34. First reading for Resolution 3, 2025, a resolution approving the expenditures made by the auditor's office on the attach list of vouchers which either exceed the purchase order or were incurred without a purchase order, exceeding the statutory limit of $3,000, all in accordance with Ohio Revised Code 5705.41D.
Mr. Greeno?
Yeah, move for acceptance of Resolution Number 003-2025.
Second, Mr. Ballman, discussion. All those in favor of the resolution, say aye if your name is called. Those opposed, nay.
Mr. DeArment.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Ballman.
Aye.
The resolution is adopted. Ordinances.
Third reading for Ordinance 2024-143, and ordinance enacting regulations on household, unhoused camps and public sleeping and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Russell?
Move for adoption of Ordinance 2024-143.
Second, Mr. Hellman, discussion. All those in favor of the ordinance, say aye if your name is called. Those opposed, nay.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Ballman.
Aye.
And Mr. DeArment.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
Third reading for Ordinance 2024-146, the exhibit was replaced tonight, and ordinance amending Chapter 767 of the codified ordinances of the city of Findlay and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Russell?
Move for adoption of Ordinance 2024-146.
Second, Mr. DeArment, discussion, hearing none. All, oh, Mr. Russell?
So, Mr. Martin, which is your new name now that we have another rob, so, replacement with a lot of red lines, do you want to run through and kind of, run through the thought process on, on, on the changes because some of our, some of them are kind of, they're not small?
Yeah. Appreciate the opportunity. We've had a lot of discussions with internal stakeholders as well as a lot of feedback from the, the mobile food unit, food truck industry. Sat down with a couple of the key local stakeholders as well, so, and got their input on how other communities do this and how it would make sense in our community. And I know there's been discussion about perimeters and so forth, and different criteria. So, a couple of the main changes that are actually redlined and pointed out in the most recent amendment is identifying the downtown area essentially from Lima Street to Center Street and then East and West. This, when it comes down to trying to keep this simple and manageable, what we want to accomplish is, it comes down to two criteria. One, private, doing this on private property or public property, and as long as individuals meet the criteria that we've established in the ordinance with the health department assessment, fire inspection, propane inspection, being in good standing with the income tax, et cetera, those criteria that are set forth and being stickered on an annual basis, where they're going to be able to work would fall under our current criteria. So, private property, as long as you meet those standards and you are, have an annual license to be a food truck in our community, you can have an event on private property, and that's not a big deal. They can do what they want, where they want. If it's in downtown, or if it's somewhere else in the community. If it comes to public property, no mobile food truck or unit can come into a parking spot, or come into a public park, or a public parking lot without being part of a special event permit process, which would mean that criteria would be established, it would be reviewed and approved through the mayor's office, and that mobile food unit would then be approved through that process. They'd still need to be licensed through the mayor on that. So, Oktoberfest would be an example. It can be done. It has a special event permit. It's part of an event downtown on public property. That's a great, Emory Adams is another example where you have large events. So, we tried to create the language that would support, trying to keep it simple, where private property or public property, there's certain criteria you have to meet, but all licensed, all have to be licensed with specific criteria on an annual basis to be functioning within the city of Findlay. That's, that's a really quick version of this, but a lot of discussion and a lot of input to get to where we're at. And I feel that this ordinance, the way it's been revised and is amended now, accomplished what we set out to do. We actually have a new industry that's growing, and we didn't have ordinances or legislation that was able to fit what they were doing, and I feel we've accomplished that we have a structured process that's easily followed. It aligns with other communities, and now we have a punch list that actually we can follow, and it keeps our community safe. It keeps people accountable that work here every day, as well as the people that come in on the weekends or special events. So, happy with this, but we can adjust as we need to.
Ms. Frishy?
Just real quick to clarify for me, I guess, we give the location of Main Street in the city of Findlay between Lima and Center, and on any streets or alleys connecting with Main Street. So, for instance, with trick-or-treat, or not trick-or-treat, the Halloween parade and things, I know there's some with a permit, but can people still set up on the street, on a side street then, or if they're closer to the hospital, or if they're over off of Tiffin Avenue, somewhere?
They, they would need to be part of an event, special, a special events permit. They would have to get that as well.
So, outside of the Main Street, they still have to have a permit to be anywhere? So, it's not just, so it's the entire city of Findlay? Should that be changed to say the city of Findlay you have to have a permit to be able to do these things, or do we keep it giving these parameters of downtown?
So, 76101, it goes through all the peddlers, solicitors, as well as mobile food. So, we amended that, this ordinance that already had those, and those criteria for peddlers and solicitors still need to be there for those people or those groups. So, that covers all of them, but then if you get into the definitions of the actual mobile food units, which is 76705, that goes into the actual definition of the criteria.
Okay, so 01 is not an issue. That's all I wanted to understand.
All those in favor of the ordinance, say aye. If your name is, Mr. Niemeyer?
So, this is, you need a license for the city of Findlay. If you're anywhere in the county, you need the Hancock County Board of Health. So, you could go to a festival in Mount Blanchard, Corey Rossen. Is that, is that right?
I didn't want to interrupt. So, in the city of Findlay, we have our criteria under this new ordinance as amended that will follow, and no matter if you're in the county or the city, you need to have a license, a permit through the Hancock Public Health Department. That's a state, that's a state thing. So, that's, that will be, that's part of our criteria in the city as well.
Right, but we don't, they don't need anything with the city of Findlay. They could go every little burb around city and leave us go.
Yeah, okay, yes.
Okay, any other questions? Mr. Russell?
Yeah, confirm, that's, that's State of Ohio Health Department, not, not county.
Correct.
Any other questions?
So.
Oh, I'm sorry. Didn't mean to interrupt you.
I'm sorry. 767.05, paragraph E, so this doesn't limit the ability of trucks on Tiffin Avenue in the parking areas close to the sidewalks, that, that's not considered, because that's private property, that's, this doesn't, they still can set up there with permission from the, from the property owner?
That is correct.
Okay.
And if the private property owner did not want them there and they complained, then it would fall under a trespassing charge, and then it would be enforced.
But when, when the neighbor wants to have their, have the food truck in front of their house for their kid's birthday party, or whatever, then they just contact, they, they get a special events permit. And out of curiosity, what does a special events permit cost? Twenty-five? Thank you.
But if they had it in their driveway, they wouldn't need that.
Correct. Private property, correct.
Okay.
If they needed to park it in the street, that would be different. They'd need a vet permit for that specific time.
And one more thing, that, on the last page, they had a five-dollar fee for, these are solicitors, peddlers, and interant merchants. I think we need to, as part of your overview of all the permits, I think that seems too low to me, but.
As, as we discussed, we talked about the parking earlier, not earlier this year, late last year, and some of these other fees, that's going to be an initiative this year in '25 to review all the permits and fees of the city to see if we have some opportunities there.
Thank you.
On one, on 76705, number B, Section 6, we got rid of proof of registration with Income Tax Department. I thought that was kind of an important thing to make sure that would help with any kind of collections we need to be doing. Why did we remove that?
So, it is part of the process, but having it, it was redundant being there. It is part of the process.
Okay.
So, we just removed it from there, but it was absolutely in good standing and be the EIN number, the business number with the city.
And then there's still. I didn't see it in here. I know we talked about it. Background checks, are we still requiring that or not? Where did that end up at?
On the food trucks, we are not.
And do you have a reason? I mean, I think that's a gray area, because if we have these food trucks going into our parks with our kids in different areas, when they're out of town especially, I mean.
And that was part of the conversation we had with the police chief and that group, and it came down to, the reality is, they, the business is registered with us, and at the end of the day, they come in day one and they get that registered with us, but you don't know who they're hiring and who's going to be working any given day. So, it's a valid point. We want to make sure we have a safe process, but we felt that when they're registering on an annual basis, they have all these criteria that they are meeting. That was something that we felt that we could do without.
Anymore? All right, all those in favor of the ordinance, say aye if your name is called. Those opposed, nay.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Nay.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Ballman.
Aye.
Mr. DeArment.
Aye.
And Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
Second reading for Ordinance 2024-150, and ordinance authorizing the mayor, service safety director, and/or city engineer of the city of Findlay, Ohio, to advertise for bids and enter into contracts for the 1800 Tiffin Avenue Access Utilities, Project Number 31947300, appropriating and transferring funds there to and declaring an emergency. First reading for Ordinance 2025-1, an ordinance to make appropriations and transfers where necessary for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Findlay, Ohio, during fiscal year ending December 31st, 2025, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Russell?
So, as to cause, not cause Ginger unnecessary heartburn, I, and so that we can actually keep running the city, move that council statutory rules be suspended in ordinance 2025-001, be given its second and third reading.
Second, Mr. Greeno, all those in favor of the suspension of the rules, say aye if your name is called. Those opposed, nay.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Ballman.
Aye.
Mr. DeArment.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Rules of council been suspended, and the clerk will give this ordinance its second and third reading.
Ordinance 2025-1, ordinance 2025-1.
Mr. Russell?
Move for adoption of Ordinance 2020, 2025-001.
Second, so I'm sorry, second, Mr. Ballman, discussion. Mr. Russell?
Just a quick point for folks, this ordinance is our initial appropriations. It allows money to be spent, and it's one of those, you've got to spend money to run a city. This is always the first ordinance of every calendar year. It is always suspended so that we can continue the operations of the city.
Ms. Frishy?
Two questions. I'll point them to Ginger. On Page 2, it says it's the understanding of council that is part of the appropriation amount shown, and it talks about SCMR and the pool fund. I guess I don't remember that we usually have these, it is the understanding of council, and then on Page 3, it is the intent of council regarding the County Road 236, and I don't know that we discussed it at budget. Maybe we did, and it, so I'm just looking to have an understanding of why that's in there, or maybe it always is.
The wording has been in there for several years. The, the wording on Page 2 has to do with the subsidies. The auditors, state auditor's office said that we needed to have something specific in there as to what that money is supposed to be for, and the wording on Page 3 has to do with, again, the state auditor's office. Even though we deal with this on the cleanup legislation at the end of the year, they want to make sure upfront that you know that city council is fronting the money until we get Tiff money in, or capital improvements money, or county progressive money, or something else in.
Appreciate it.
All those in favor of the ordinance, say aye if your name is called. Those opposed, nay.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Ballman.
Aye.
Mr. DeArment.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
First reading for Ordinance 2025-2, and ordinance appropriating funds and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Russell?
Once again, this is an ordinance that is, we see annually. It always is suspended. This one is really the same logic, except it is for the sewer fund and the, and the, that department. So, move the council statutory rules be suspended, and ordinance 2025-002 be given its second and third reading.
Second, Mr. DeArment, all those in favor of the suspension of the rules, say aye if your name is called. Those opposed, nay.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Ballman.
Aye.
Mr. DeArment.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
And Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Rules of council been suspended, and the clerk will give this ordinance its second and third reading.
Ordinance 2025-2, ordinance 2025-2.
Mr. Greeno?
Move for adoption of ordinance number 2025-002.
Second, Mr. Ballman, discussion. All those in favor of the ordinance, say aye if your name is called. Those opposed, nay.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Ballman.
Aye.
Mr. DeArment.
Aye.
Ms. Green, Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
And Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
First reading for Ordinance 2025-100, or 0, first reading for Ordinance 2025-3, and ordinance authorizing the mayor, service safety director, and/or city engineer of the city of Findlay, Ohio, to advertise for bids where required and enter into contracts for construction of various projects, appropriating and transferring funds for said capital expenditures, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Russell?
One of, one of the advantages of us having cash on hand at the beginning of the year is that we can be first out of the chute with projects, specifically sewer lining and paving projects, and because of that, we get more aggressive bidding earlier in the year. And the last handful of years, it's been, this has been a common ordinance that we've seen to take advantage of our, our pricing that we can get. Therefore, I move that council statutory rules be suspended, and ordinance 2025-003 be given its second and third reading.
Second, Mr. Niemeyer, all those in favor of suspension of the All those in favor of suspension of the rules, say aye after name is called. Those opposed, nay.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Mr. Diarmant.
Aye.
Ms. Frischie.
Nay.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
And Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Rules of council been suspended and the clerk will give this ordinance its second and third reading.
Ordinance 2025-3. Ordinance 2025-3.
Mr. Palmer?
Move for adoption of ordinance number 2025-003.
Second, Ms. Warnicki. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the ordinance, say aye after name is called. Those opposed, nay.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Mr. Diarmant.
Aye.
Ms. Frischie.
Aye.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
And Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
First reading for ordinance 2025-4, and this is a replacement. An ordinance amending Chapter 149.02 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Findlay, Ohio entitled Airport Advisory Board, thus repealing ordinance 2023-119. All ordinances and/or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and declaring in emergency. That's it?
Old business. New business. Mr. Diarmant?
Just a quick FY that I'll be stepping down from the Blanchard River Watershed Partnership Board and will be replaced by Randy Greenow in 2025.
Back to Don, right? So, Don, did we screw it up tonight or not? You know why we didn't? Because you've always pointed us in the right direction when needed, so. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Baumann? Second, Mr., well, Mayor, now you did that real late.
I'm sorry. You were very speedy.
Yes. Maybe that was for a reason. Did you ever think that?
I just wanted to.
Hang on, we have a motion. Do you withdraw your motion, Mr. Baumann?
I withdraw my motion.
Okay, Mayor.
Mr. President.
Thank you. I just think we would be a bit remiss to not recognize the passing of James Kaler. Obviously, he was very instrumental in our community over the years and involved in lots of organizations. And, you know, I just wanted to give him recognition. And certainly also to Don, I will be appointing, I will interimally appoint Rob Feigner to act as law director. And then we'll be working through the central committee process to determine long-term replacement. Hopefully, they will support him as he's been working with us for many years. So, more to follow on that as well. Thank you.
I'm not saying anything. Mr. Russell?
Move to adjourn.
Second, Mr. Baumann. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? We are adjourned.
Quick meeting tonight, what the heck?
No blood?
No blood.